Sandy, you've got a new car? It's an accident car. Oh, no, oh, no, oh, wait, I thought that this was a new car because of the accident.
What?
I thought this was a new car because of the last accident, but no, it's your new car and it's been in the two accidents.
And it's been parked.
Okay.
I think that's what it is. I understand, whether to decide back out or move forward, why then I'm sticking to this way. This is here. This is here, starts to get to the back seat.
Yeah, we talked about that some. Overly relying on technology.
Overly, yes, right way. Look, we were all dressed in color, hair, and everything. We can really do this for that.
We could Photoshop them in. Okay.
So are we wearing burgundy for the group shot?
He's just gonna use our existing headshots. Pretty soon it'll be. Old and blue. I'm good, I've got this one, thanks Janet.
Funny how things change. Oh, yeah. They can give one to maybe one of your neighbors. It's a big cock. Pop. Not pop, pop. Well, I have to be careful what I say, who's going to know? So, I'm a little big. Although the governor's announcement, like, I could have been saying that. I haven't read the Jay Lark study yet. But if it's anything like Colorado, the kids are gonna need more.
Did you see the, uh, one legislator's question to Jay Lark?
No.
About hiring, about not hiring diverse people?
Yes.
That's kind of a interesting little jab.
Yep.
So the Jay Lark, you know, they, they, they rat on everybody?
I don't know that I would say that, but reports.
Okay, so they, they write, they write, um, nonpartisan, uh, mutual reports, and so they were, you know, something, oh, what was it? What was that one about? Was it you were just talking about?
Marijuana legalization.
Made a bit.
Yeah, that's where the, that's the article that he said, what he came from.
And then, and then the legislator said that they didn't, that Jay Lark themselves didn't hire enough diverse candidates. That was like, who's gonna vote?
I think there's already, there's just. I'm in. Six thirty, uh, five, five thirty contract. Yeah, I, I read that, it's five thirty, everybody even see that? You and I, you, we have the same brain.
Is that where you wanna be?
Yes, it is.
I'm just asking both of you, is that where you wanna be?
It is exactly where I wanna be. I love Lisa.
Quite literally.
Five thirty.
Well, I got the, I got the text placement, Lisa, bust her on her toys, about five o'clock?
I know, and I was like, I'm trying here, whatever. Okay, it's good, thank you. All right, everyone's good? I bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order, is there a motion to convene, uh, to certify closed session? To certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City.
Board, while enclosed session discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Um, the next item is public comment, uh, for the CIP. The community had an opportunity to phone in comments, it's my understanding there were none. So we will move on to roll call, Ms. Serza.
Like to note that Dr. Beers is absent tonight due to health issues involving COVID. Ms. Cook?
I am here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Item four point two, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Adam Chair, I move that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Don't think I've ever been called on first. Moving on to item five point one, announcements and superintendent's report, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, tonight's announcements begin with special thanks to three amazing groups that are helping to keep our students safe by providing face coverings and supplies. The first group, People Protecting Education, or PPE, was formed by Nick Hart, a senior at Jamestown High School, and his family. His mom, Pam Hart, writes, "The 2020-21 school year was filled with uncertainty. We didn't know if students would attend school in person or virtually. As schools made plans to open during the COVID-19 pandemic, we wanted to help students and teachers protect themselves. We decided to help by launching People Protecting Education, PPE, to raise money to purchase face coverings, hand sanitizer, and other PPE supplies for the schools in the district. We were able to raise enough money to purchase seventy-two bottles of hand sanitizer, uh, 1,050 face masks, and 30 boxes of tissues. Without question, the People Protecting Education are all hurt. Thank you for your thoughtfulness and action to support our students and school community. In the same spirit of giving, Mask Force Williamsburg recently delivered 325 cloth face coverings to our elementary schools. More than 50 volunteers on this team hand-me into the masks that are designed specifically for elementary students. Each one includes a filter, string to wear around the neck, and a personalized note on caring for the mask. Thank you, Mask Force Williamsburg." The third group, VA for the People, is also donating face coverings for every WJCC school student. VA for the People is a nonpartisan group that strives to encourage and empower everyone to make their voice heard by voting in local, state, and national elections. The organization, which is led by Something in the Water Music Festival organizers, donated two face coverings for each of our students. A big thank you tonight for their generosity. If you visit our Facebook page, you will see all kinds of face coverings in use at our elementary schools. This week, we welcomed back fourth and fifth grade students to school buildings for blended learning. They are onsite two days a week with their classmates and learning remotely three days a week from home. Their arrival signals the return of all elementary school students in the school division. Finally, we are monitoring health data, the number of COVID cases in our schools, and guidance from the CDC related to the potential for increased exposure to families over the Thanksgiving holiday. Based on current information, I am recommending an adjustment to our timeline for some middle and high school students' return. We will share specifics of that recommendation as part of tonight's Return to Learn presentation in just a few minutes. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I know there's a CAC update, um, we'll start there, and then if other, um, members have updates, we'll go next. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes, the Special Education Advisory Committee met earlier this week and welcomed 13 new members, which was very exciting, and because of the volume of new members, staff arranged an orientation, uh, which all members attended and found very valuable. It was a really incredible, um, presentation, I'm very grateful for staff for their hard work on it, it was informative. The CAC also, um, elected a new chair, um, I mean, a, a chair, re-elected rather, Michael Willen, and he'll be serving as chair for the second year. And they formed, um, a work group to, um, to talk about, um, their, uh, work towards a report to the school board in later this year, I mean, later next year rather, in June. And their, the work of that subgroup will be focused on, uh, looking at inclusion policies at other school divisions and, um, providing that information to the school board for their consideration. And last but not least, um, staff shared with them a draft of the restraint, uh, seclusion and restraint policy that is coming to the policy committee, I think, later this week, if you guys, wherever, whenever you're meeting. And, um, staff will convey to, um, to that committee some of the, uh, comments from, uh, from the CAC members, but it was a really productive conversation.
Thank you so much for that detailed update, are there additional updates from other members? Hearing none, moving on to item six point one, citizens' comments, I understand we do have some comments tonight.
Gaila Baumgart, "I would like to call on the board to start planning for post-COVID and be proactive in how we are going to fight the COVID tide in learning. I have been told my first grader is a whole school year behind, and my fourth grader has dropped in his grades and is struggling every day with the virtual learning. I'd like the idea put forward in the last meeting about reduced class sizes. I would also like to recommend possibly the school system offering a voluntary summer school to any students who want it in July or August 2021. I'm sure there are many other ideas about how to help the students, but the board needs to start now being proactive in putting the money and approvals in place so that we can get, get our kids back on track after the vaccine. Thank you."
My name is Amy Beckhueson, I'm a teacher at Jamestown High School. I am feeling very anxious and concerned about the plan for students to return to the building on November 30th. I just don't understand why we would bring kids back into the building at a time when coronavirus, um, rates are rising exponentially and, um, the numbers are higher than they've ever been. With the classes divided in half, I'll still have some classes with 14 or 15 students, and we cannot socially distance in a classroom with that many people. So I'm disappointed that we would consider putting teachers and students in an unsafe situation where we're not following CDC guidelines. Um, I really don't think we should return to school on November 30th for the safety of students and teachers. Makes me anxious to think about the potential of getting COVID. And same for my students, I've shared this with.
Hello, my name is Bridget Maline, and I am a high school teacher for a WJCC school. I've already written a board with my concerns about Path Three and the additional cuts to instructional time that come with it. However, after writing my letter, it was brought to my attention that students in New Horizons and Governor's School will no longer be able to attend live class sessions at their home school once we switch to the Path Three schedule. They are being told that the solution is for them to just watch the recordings of their classes in the afternoon. While these students are incredibly intelligent and hardworking, it is not fair to put on them the expectation that they complete advanced placement courses entirely asynchronously. I urge you to reconsider the schedule change that comes with Path Three for the sake of students and teachers alike. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron and School Boards, this is Kimberly Huntley, wish I could be there before you, but gotta stay safe. Just wanted to make sure that you received my JMU information and swag and, you know, I'm excited about starting my new role as a recruiter. I'm going to try my best to bring many, many people to Williamsburg to teach. If you have any questions, please let me know, I know that I'll have your support. And be blessed and stay safe.
That concludes our comments. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve item seven point one, approval of minutes from October 20th, October 26th, and November 10th meetings, as well as personnel actions, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the, the minutes as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Um, action items, eight point one, financial report, uh, monthly bills and payroll for October, is there a motion to approve that?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the financial report, monthly bills and payroll for the month ended October 31st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Ewing.
Okay, Mr. Kelly? Yeah, I. Consent agenda? I think Mr. Kelly has.
Madam Chair, before we move on, just a point of order, can we just clarify that we approved the entire consent agenda, including seven point oh one and seven point oh two, just for the record, please?
We did, I read them both, we did.
It was the motion that.
Wonky, we did.
I thought she said approved as presented this evening, as read this evening.
Yes.
She read it, and she moved to approve what she read.
Do I approve the?
Yeah, she said the minutes.
The minutes, that's why I was like, I was about to text Janet.
Sorry, that's my mistake.
So, need to do it again, or do we need to?
Or do the personnel?
Is there a motion to approve personnel action items as presented?
I move that we.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. No.
Robert's rules be okay. So my first question, Ms. Ewing, is the 2,987.15% increase on page, whatever that is, five?
Yes, that is a typo, when we reformatted that cell, I believe it got, um, out of whack. That should be 29.87 for October 2019 for that first cost center.
Those are my expectations. Appreciate that. Um, and the second question, um, do you happen to know what no red ink renewal is? On the last, on page seven, for 29,100? Is that a Ms. Sanders question?
It's actually.
That would be a curriculum question, uh, Dr. Worley?
Remember, we discussed that last, at some point?
If I had remembered that, I wouldn't be asking the question.
Yeah, 'cause we all commented, we commented on the name. It's a book, I don't, it's curriculum, it's something, book?
Do a lot of no red ink assignments, I will tell you that.
I think it's that online curriculum?
While we're waiting for that answer, Ms. Ewing, if, Madam Chair, is it okay? Um, could you just, uh, how are we doing overall, just for the viewing public, um, you know, given that budgets were our concern during a pandemic, if you could just sort of give us your top line, one or two sentence, how are we doing?
Also, overall, our revenue is trending, um, in line with our budget. We may receive a little additional revenue beyond what we budgeted because we did budget at a very conservative level for sales tax revenue. We were expecting a larger decline than our most recent estimates from the state. So we're expected to receive some additional sales tax revenue. And even though we do have a decline in enrollment that affects our ADM, the General Assembly recently approved some one-time COVID relief payments, so that's gonna offset that decline that we're gonna see from our ADM.
It's good to know, yeah.
Dr. Worley, can you remind me again what no red ink?
Yes, sir. No red ink is a tool that we've been using for several years, um, in Williamsburg. And teachers at the high schools typically use that, um, it's a, it's a, it kind of houses papers. Students submit their work through that, and it's, um, it's also helps teachers, um, pick up on plagiarism quickly, but more, more than that, there is, um, resources for submitting things electronically, you know, prior to the days that we were remote anyway. But, um, social studies teachers, English teachers are the majority of the ones that use them across all three schools. We started off several years ago in one school, and then we expanded that resource at all three high schools.
I will attempt to not ask you that question again.
I'll answer it if you, if you ask me again.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any additional questions? So we have a motion and a second, no further discussion, Ms. Serza, will you?
Mr. Dowell?
What was the question?
Um, we're approving item eight point one, the financial report.
I'm sorry, aye, thank you.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Um, is there a motion to authorize, um, eight point one, authorization of 1.5% salary increase and a one-time bonus?
Madam Chair, for that?
Yeah, I, I was, yes, I was.
I could say, as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in this item because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on this issue fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, my note was right there, it was coming next.
I understand.
Madam Chair, I approve, I move that we approve a 1.5 salary increase effective January 1, 2021 for contracted employees, employed, employed as of November 1, 2020, and a one-time bonus payment of $500 to contracted employees.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, the only discussion I would have is that, um, this is a meager appreciation of the teachers and the members of the school system's efforts in beating this pandemic, and, uh, we would, we would really like to do more, and, uh, we hope to do more in the future, but, uh, I hope they take this with the, as the, as the token that we can offer now, and, 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 uh, we have our utmost respect and appreciation.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Were there additional comments?
Ditto.
Thank you, I think we can all say ditto. Hearing no additional comments, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Um, item eight point three, is there a motion to, um, approve the annual review and approval of the school board's, um, standard operating procedures?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve revisions and re-adopt the school board's standard operating procedures.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Ms. Cook? Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Item eight point four, is there a motion to revise policy KK? School visitors.
Madam Chair, I move approval of, of policy KK, of the revision to policy KK school visitors as presented this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Cox, I appreciate the change that you made.
Any additional comments?
Trying to keep her here as long as we did last time.
I appreciate the work. Hearing no additional comments or questions, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Moving on to proposed agenda items, uh, as I mentioned last week, there's a request for permanent and temporary easements of real property, um, at James River Elementary School, I guess.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Snipes is here to present the agenda item this evening. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Heron, tonight's agenda item is a request for a permanent maintenance and temporary construction easement in order to, um, proceed with the project. Williamsburg James City County Board is being asked to grant a temporary construction easement of about .4 acres, and a permanent maintenance easement of about .1 acres is what is known as Grice's Run, which is directly next to James River Elementary School. The James City County Division of Stormwater and Resource Protection recently received a grant fund for construction of a stream restoration project to restore heavily eroded stream segments at Grice's Run. No funding is requested from the board, and the project will be conducted by consultants overseen by the James City County General Services staff. The superintendent recommends the school board approve this request for temporary construction easement and a permanent maintenance easement at 80901 Pocahontas Trail, like I say, which is directly adjacent to James River Elementary School. Next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes, do you have questions for Mr. Snipes?
I have none, I thought it was very well presented, and I understood completely once I realized it was James River Elementary School.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Snipes, oh, wait, wait, no, wait, Ms. Young has a question.
Right. So this is a permanent ease of .1 acre for maintenance, does that mean that the county is going to take care of the maintenance of that area?
Yes, they need access permanently to maintain that area of Grice's Run. There's some heavily, it's eroded right now, so if it becomes eroded again, they will go out and, um, provide maintenance in that area.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Questions? Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Okay, moving on to, um, information and discussion items, ten point one, return to learn, Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, tonight we're sharing adjustments to the return to learn schedule based on the trend in our data regionally and locally. We had planned to bring some high school and middle school students back starting on November 30th, but due to current data trends, trends, that you will hear about from Mr. Kiefer in a moment, we have revised the schedule. We are currently at higher risk of transmission in schools. In the moderate and higher risk category, the VDH, CDC, and Virginia Department of Education guidance recommends prioritizing specific learners for limited in-person instruction. Students with disabilities, English learners, and pre-K through third grade students. And, and that really represents Path Two of our plan that we're currently on. With the arrival of grades four and five this week, we have limited in-person instruction for all elementary students. So in fact, we're actually moving into Path Three a little bit right now. We're making the decision to not move forward into Path Three totally, uh, and that is offering in-person instruction to all students, including secondary students. Because of the trend of the data, um, because of the Health Department's Eastern Region, that includes WJCC, has moved into the highest level of transmission, um, because the Center of Disease Control is warning of a spike in cases due to the holidays, due to exposure at family gatherings and travel, and therefore, it's really just not the right time to put something on the schedule right now. Also in the timeline, you'll notice that there's an extra precaution for staff and students. Also, in the timeline, you'll notice that there's an extra precaution for staff and students. We will temporarily resume remote learning for one week after Thanksgiving and for one extra week after winter break due to the current concerning trend in the data. We're going to keep monitoring the data. We're going to keep families informed. And once we know where we're going to go with this, we will inform families. It's a very difficult decision to not keep moving forward with bringing students into school because we know how much they need to be there. But ultimately, the health and safety of our students and staff comes first. And we really believe that this is the right decision at this moment in time. The good news is that regardless of the mode of instruction, we are still in school. And students are, will still be learning, and teachers will continue to do the amazing job that they're doing. So that's our, our new outline of, of the time. And I'm going to pass over to Mr. Kever, Chief Operating Officer now, to take us through the data this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kever.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board members. This evening's presentation will provide the most recent Virginia Department of Health data and offer the School Board some key information on student progress for the first marking period. Here you'll see the latest information from the WJCC COVID-19 dashboard. You will note the positive case totals for staff have increased since the last School Board meeting, which was a week ago today. And as of yesterday, we have reported the first case where a student who was briefly on-site for learning tested positive. We continue to work with school leaders and the broader school community to ensure we are communicating critical health information as quickly as possible while also working to ensure we are in compliance with privacy laws in HIPAA. You will also recall that there are five levels of risk transmission in schools, dark green to red on the bottom right-hand side of that graphic. Here is the data for today relative to Williamsburg and James City County. The numbers represent the new cases and percent positive, while the colors of the blocks correspond to the CDC levels for risk of transmission in schools. We've mentioned before, the division uses this data and recommendations from VDOE when deciding what path to be on and how many students should be in school. For comparison purposes, during the November 10 School Board meeting, the James City County numbers were 87.7 and 3.3%, while the Williamsburg numbers last week were 188 and 6.7% positivity. Also wish to remind the Board that we continue to keep in mind the 90%, 10% split relative to our school division. Provided on this slide, you will note the individual metrics burden and trend for the Eastern Region. Again, as of today, we shared this graphic with the Board last week and indicated this is yet another piece of information with respect to COVID cases in our larger community. By way of reminder, last Tuesday, the case burden number was 11.4, and the percent positivity rate was 5.2. As you can see from the information in front of you, the case burden and positivity rates have both increased in our region in the last seven days. Case burden has been increasing for 26 consecutive days, and the percent positivity has been increasing for 20 consecutive days. This graphic is one that's available on the VDH CDC School Metrics site and offers a look across the Commonwealth with respect to several indicators. This particular map shows the 14-day case incidences relative to new cases per 100,000 persons within a geographical area. As we mentioned last week, and you can see from, again, this map, the red, which is the highest level of risk, continues to encroach across the Commonwealth of Virginia. This is the 14-day case incidence map. This map is the seven-day case incident map. And what you will note here, if you can see in the far right-hand side, is that Williamsburg and James City County are both in the red on this particular map with respect to case incidents over the last seven days. In order to be coded as red on this map, it's anything above 10% in this seven-day timeframe. James City County is currently at 54% increase, and Williamsburg is just under 31% increase. As we've mentioned to this group and the community each time, there are certain things within our control when it comes to COVID-19. And one of those primary things is consistent and relentless use of the health mitigation strategies. We talk often about using those strategies and want to remind folks that daily, our students and staff should do symptom checks and self-assessment for wellness before reporting to school. Use of face coverings by students and staff is mandatory. Social distancing to the greatest extent possible and enhanced hygiene practices that include frequent hand washing. These are critical, and we must implement these strategies with fidelity as we continue to look at bringing students back into the building. At this juncture, we will transition to Dr. Worley, beginning an update on student progress relative to the first marking period of this school year.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the Board. You recall that there are four paths in our return to learn forward WJCC schools plan. Path one, remote learning for all students. Path two, limited blended learning, which is a mix of remote learning and in-person learning at school. And path three are blended learning for all students, K-12. And finally, path four, onsite learning for all. Student progress for marking period one will encompass three main areas: attendance, engagement, and achievement. Instructional planning during path one, remote learning for all students, require teachers to reflect, question, and embrace several changes in practice to support a new learning environment. For example, in a remote learning or virtual environment, teachers make decisions about what part of a lesson will be live or synchronous instruction and what can be posted for later access or asynchronous instruction. Teachers now must also assess and understand how student engagement may look different in a remote setting as compared to face-to-face. Also, they identify how we will assess student understanding of the taught curriculum while striving for a balance of addressing the social, emotional needs of students. Our teachers and support staff have done an amazing job reimagining instruction and striving to keep students engaged. As always, their sheer dedication and student-centered focus is top-notch. Now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Keeping attendance is a necessary and critical task for our schools. Daily attendance is tied to compulsory attendance, monitoring truancy, gauging student well-being, determining funding by way of average daily membership, and linked to schools accreditation status. Taking daily student attendance now requires a multi-tiered system of balances and checks, which includes multiple staff members, such as the registrar, classroom teacher, and the centers' teachers at the elementary level. Schools must consider more than just who is present in the moment for live face-to-face instruction. Teachers must also review asynchronous work completed by students remotely at home, which indicates a student is present and engaged in meaningful interaction. Other examples of meaningful interaction include two-way communication, such as email, phone calls, electronic conferences, and purposeful feedback on student work. Daily, our schools are checking and rechecking onsite attendance and evidence of remote learning to accurately track and record student attendance for all students. This is no longer a one-person, one-time event. It is a multi-person approach with checks and rechecks involved throughout the week. Each month, schools and central office review data on the average daily attendance of students across the school division. This slide shows a comparison of marking period one from 2019 to our current 2020 attendance data. Taking, recording, and tracking student attendance is a time-consuming team approach with several checks and rechecks this year. You can see, though, from the data above that we are on target with a consistent attendance pattern as compared to last school year for marking period one. During remote instruction and limited in-person instruction, student engagement has looked quite different this first marking period. Teachers have focused on rethinking how they deliver engaging instruction in a remote setting and for in-person instruction with all the health and mitigation strategies and expectations. For example, we have approximately 900 teachers and roughly 240,000 Zoom meetings that took place during the first marking period. WJCC curriculum is now stored in a learning management system called Canvas, which is in a standardized format and accessible anytime, anywhere for secondary teachers and students. Elementary teachers also access their curriculum in Canvas, but have an additional layer of moving material onto their webpage so that elementary students can access synchronous and asynchronous learning of materials through student view. And speaking of student view, we currently have 63 students out of 10,839 that schools are working with to access view. This is less than 1%. In fact, it is 0.6% grand total for K through 12 students. As of November 11th, to break it down further, 15 elementary students have not accessed student view. 11 of those 15 are brand-new students that just started school on October 26th. Six of those 15 are receiving in-person specialized instruction four days per week and have not had the need to access view. So 15 out of 4,600 roughly elementary students, or 0.3% of the total elementary enrollment. But all students are accounted for, and our schools have worked diligently to reduce that down on the list. Moving on to middle school, five middle school students have not accessed view. However, four of the five not accessing view are students receiving special education services four days per week in person. And one of the five is receiving modified services with paper and pencil. That does not require the student to access view. So therefore, all middle school students are accounted for. High school, 42 high school students have not accessed student view. 12 of the 42 not accessing view are receiving special education services, included in-person instruction. 10 of those are enrolled in the GED program. One is a recent GED graduate, and two are in the process of testing for the GED program. Six of those 42 are fully enrolled in Virtual Virginia. Four are enrolled in VLP courses through our Division Learning Lab. Two are enrolled in Virtual Virginia in early college, and one is a brand-new student. Two have received their laptop at home from a school team just last week. The final two out of the 42 are attendance concerns, and the schools are working diligently with those two families. The great news is, we have all students accounted for at all levels, and that is reflective of the tremendous work of our schools to work on that effort. I'll turn it back to Dr. Worley.
Zoom is the electronic platform engaging students in live synchronous instruction from remote locations. This tool also supports staff meetings and collaboration across sites. The onset of the pandemic in March of 2020 is when our division staff began learning how to utilize this platform on a routine basis. The chart on this slide documents our division meetings since March. The most significant increases happened in September, October, and November as our teachers facilitated live daily instruction. For example, there were over 90,000 Zoom meetings during the month of October and over 100,000 in the month of November. And currently, we have just over 1,000 users across our division. As Mr. Walker shared earlier, Canvas is our course management system that supports online learning and teaching in remote and blended environments. This is one of, one of our tools to engage students in learning at the middle and high school. We expanded our online content by building additional courses in Canvas, our platform to house content, resources, activities, and lessons. To prepare for this school year, our teachers worked many hours over the course of the summer and into the school year to build content in Canvas for student and teacher access at the secondary level and for teacher access at the elementary level. Last year, we utilized Canvas to support virtual learning in unique settings. The chart above shows the number of content courses built in Canvas during the 2019-20 school year for middle and high school curriculum compared to the number of courses built in Canvas to support blended learning during the 2021 school year. The courses support remote and blended access for students to courses in our program of studies. For example, during this school year, during the 2019-20 school year, Williamsburg schools had 35 high school courses built in Canvas versus our current year where we have 177 high school courses built in Canvas. As you can see from this slide, the development of multiple courses in Canvas and our transition to remote and blended learning has facilitated a significant increase in active users on Canvas. The graph above spans from October through, October 2019 through October 2020 and highlights increased usage across teachers, students, and most recently, teacher assistants. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Walker.
New in the fall of 2019, the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program is a required state assessment measuring math, self-regulation, and social skills, which pairs up with the phonological awareness literacy screening, known as PALS, to show a more comprehensive picture of school readiness and success. Both assessments are required for all students entering kindergarten. Both are administered one-on-one and require two testing sessions for each kindergarten student. The PALS assessment is also required for all first and second grade students. As you will recall, on October 26th, grades K through three students returned in person for onsite learning, and schools are working to finish the required state assessments. The student data collected from both assessments help to inform direct and targeted instruction while also providing benchmarks to monitor student growth over time. MAPS, the measure of academic progress. WJCC students in grades three through eight take math and reading MAPS. These assessments are computer adaptive and adjust to each student's learning level. As the student answers questions, the test responds by adjusting the level of difficulty. Additionally, the assessment allows for a continued test session over multiple days based on individual student needs, such as if a student became frustrated during a testing session. MAP growth is used to measure a student's performance level at different times of the school year, to monitor academic growth, and to also inform target, targeted instruction. This slide reveals preliminary student data based on partial completion. At the close of the first marking period, approximately 71% of all kindergarten students have completed the VKRP assessment. And 75% of those are meeting the math expectations. For the fall of 2019, 79% of our students met the math expectations. Additionally, about 90% of students in kindergarten, first, and second grades have completed the PALS assessment, with 70% meeting or exceeding the expected benchmark. In comparison to the fall of 2019, 82% of students met or exceeded the fall benchmark for the PALS assessment. Approximately 90% of our middle school students have completed the MAPS assessment in a remote setting this fall, mainly from home. While a staff member proctored the while a staff member proctored the testing session electronically. In a comparison to the fall of 2019, the preliminary math MAPS data reveals about a 3% decline and about a 2% decline in reading. This was our first attempt with remote testing and it was quite successful due to the direct training and the support provided to the school teams and their staff. Again, I would like to caution on that data. It's preliminary based on partial completion. Grades 3, 4, and 5 elementary students are currently taking the MAPS assessments in person onsite. That's roughly 1,800 students taking two tests, 3,600 tests to be taken, one in reading and one in math for each of those students. It's too soon right now to make an analysis of current performance against the previous school year, but as of today, almost 1,000 of those tests have been completed out of the 3,600. Dr. Worley, I'll turn it back to you next.
And I mentioned student engagement now. Schools have creatively worked to engage with their students at all levels. For example, you can see here the Jamestown High School Spanish Club meeting over Zoom. And schools engage families and students with virtual open houses, orientations, and drive-through events. Students also were happy to begin athletic conditioning, as seen at Lafayette High School. And also at Lafayette, a remediation opportunity is affectionately referred to as Ram Nation Boot Camp. Our staff and leaders will do what they do best, which is keeping a student-centered focus and working collaboratively and creatively to keep students engaged and successful in school. And they are often found remembering to always have a little fun along the way, as seen in this Throwdown Thursday event at James Blair Middle School. Now, Mr. Walker will start our conversation about our nine-week data.
For elementary schools, our nine elementary schools, looking at report cards, I'd like to remind the group tonight that the marking period did end on November 6th, but elementary report cards will be distributed on November 23rd through View to families. So for 2019, in marking period 1, 46 elementary students, or less than 1%, earned a failing grade on their report card during marking period 1. In comparison to this school year, 116 students, or 2.5% of the total elementary enrollment, have earned a failing grade on their report card. We currently have approximately 4,600 elementary students, about 3,400 in the WJCC paths, and about 1,200 in the Virtual Academy.
Mr. Walker, I'm sorry, but the percentage on that, the denominator has changed, right? So if we use last year's denominator, it'd be a different percent. Do you see what I'm saying? It's a smaller number of students.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But I wanted to give you in respect to the total enrollment each year. Did I answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, yeah, thank you. Middle and high school report cards were available in View on November 10th. The next few slides will share academic data across middle and high school and is reflective of all content areas, core, and electives. We currently have 2,531 students attending our four middle schools. This number includes students participating in the Virtual Academy. The current slide is a comparison of our 2020 first nine-week grades to the 2019 first nine-week data. Our current middle school students take six classes per day, four core on a daily basis, and a blend of two to three elective courses on an A-B rotating schedule. This school year, 215 students in our middle schools have 1D or F for the first nine weeks. 142 students have 2Ds or Fs and 654 students have 3 or more. As compared to the 2019 school year, our first nine-week data showed 289 students with 1D or F, 175 students with 2Ds or Fs, and 336 with 3 or more. School teams run DF reports in middle and high school to identify students needing support in specific content areas. This is one data point used to build individual intervention and/or remediation plans. And please note, we will highlight action steps and support interventions for struggling students K-12 immediately following our data slides. The next slide for middle school shows first nine-week data highlights from 2020 as compared to 2019. During our current school year for the first nine-week grading period, 1,423 students out of 2,535 students, 31 students, have all As, Bs, and Cs. And from that group, 1,423 of them have As and Bs and 487 have all As. The next slide shows a comparison of first nine-week grades in high school from our current 2020 to 2019 year. Our current high school students have the opportunity to take eight classes per year. One important piece of information when looking at this comparison is to note the majority of our current students are one-fourth of the way through the course versus this time last year when most of our students were halfway through the course. Additionally, this year, most students are enrolled in eight courses versus last year's data, which reflects anywhere from four to six and sometimes possibly seven, depending on the student's schedule. As of the end of the first nine weeks, 472 students have 1D or F for the first nine weeks. 233 students have 2Ds or Fs and 803 have 3 or more. So about 21% of our current students are facing challenges with 3 or more. In 2019, 507 students had 1D or F, 268 students had 2Ds or Fs, and 257 students had 3. Please note, in 2019, again, students were halfway through the course with a huge push to complete makeup work. While the data for the first nine weeks show challenges for some students, we do have confidence in the amount of time we have to embrace interventions and opportunities to review skills and pull up current grades. The final academic slide shows highlights from our current nine-week high school data in comparison to 2019. As of the end of the first nine weeks, 2,014 students of the 3,698 have all As, Bs, and Cs. Of the 2,014, 1,354 students have all As and Bs and 545 have all As. As compared to 2019, when 2,560 of the 3,638 had all As, Bs, and Cs. And of the 2,560, 1,212 had all As and Bs and 562 had all As. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Walker now to begin talking about our action steps.
Similar to every school year, schools hold regularly scheduled collaboration and instructional planning meetings with administrators, teachers, and school leadership teams at the interim and close of each marking period to identify resources and interventions for individual students needing support. Schools work in partnership with families and community partners by connecting through conferences, phone calls, emails, occasional home visits, ParentView, and the Remind app. One such example to highlight is the newly established elementary partnership with the College of William and Mary. Identified elementary students were connected with a vetted college student to meet over Zoom to work together on an area of need, such as the completion of homework or possibly additional practice in math fact fluency. Another great example is to involve the student when appropriate to bring them into the process so that they are part of the efforts. Student goal-setting with established check-ins and check-outs are commonly utilized and supported by staff members. Additionally, schools maintain their own electronic data walls with multiple data points to support strategic conversations and focused instructional planning for students' needs. At the middle and high school levels, leadership teams monitor the progress of grade-level cohorts. They establish watch lists and data walls for teams to monitor academic progress, attendance, and any other special information. School teams analyze this data and pull from a bank of resources and strategies to craft a plan that supports individual students' needs. One such example of an intervention tool used this year was our project graduation boot camps initiated by Dr. Christopher Kelly and our student advancement coaches at each high school. The Virginia Department of Education offered the opportunity for specific seniors and juniors to earn a locally verified credit for the writing SOL. Schools organized an opportunity for small groups of seniors to come into buildings to receive tutoring and remediation for the SOL writing test, the Work Keys exam, and to possibly prepare for SOL tests missed during the previous year. This allows students to earn verified credits as needed for their graduation. Special education teachers, English language teachers, and content teachers pitched in together across the division to support these students. Another example of going above and beyond was evident in the work of Ms. Denny, an Algebra I teacher at Lafayette High School. When her English language learner students returned to the building, she offered to have them attend her Algebra I class in person with the collaborating ESL teacher while working remotely with the remainder of her class on Zoom. Throughout the next marking period, all school teams will follow up checking on student progress and making adjustments where needed. This is all part of each school's cyclical process of plan, do, check, and act.
We've talked a lot about assessments, potential gaps, and interventions tonight, but we do not want to lose sight of the fact that despite the pandemic, we have students who are achieving in every grade, in every course, in every school community across Williamsburg and James City County. Teachers and counselors are having extremely positive interactions with students and high school seniors are still applying to colleges and planning for their future. We found new and creative ways to engage students outside and inside of their classroom routine. For example, band students are putting together amazing performances from their homes. Our science team has put together 100% Virtual Science Fair for students this year. Science teachers are reaching out currently to students. And likewise, our budding scientist in the division can check in with their teachers for details. Our incomparable staff is giving their all to support students academically and emotionally. Their grit and compassion are awe-inspiring. This is evident in the work of many employees who work directly with students, meeting them where they are, supporting many through numerous life challenges while continuing to support their academic needs. One example is that Dr. Dan Myany shared, principal at Lafayette High School. He showed a story about his student advancement coach, Mr. Jefferson, who drove almost 300 miles over the last two months to deliver MiFi's, computers, and other academic support services for families. The social worker, Ms. Finley, is also working with local agencies to provide support for students needing basic supplies, such as food, clothing, and technology. Across our division, our school counselors are hosting traditional senior meetings via Zoom to prepare students. Also, at Lafayette High School, to promote school spirit, students are having club meetings and other virtual events, such as Model UN and Virtual Theater Association conferences. In addition to the absence of the traditional homecoming dance, Lafayette hosted a Fall Ball via Zoom. The staff is committed to going the extra mile to support every Ram every day. Across our division, our teachers want nothing more for students to be back in person, but we're giving our best each day and they are exhausting every resource to engage those needing support and to promote the overall well-being of every child. We should all be proud of the work of our staff and students and as a division, we are focused, flexible, and forward-thinking. We must not forget to celebrate our success.
Madam Chair, that concludes our return to Learn Forward WJCC schools update for this evening and we're happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Hummel?
I'll start. Just, this is a real simple question, or I guess request. On slide number six and seven, if there's any way in the future, because I'm assuming you're going to be presenting these, you know, in the future, if you could just mark on the map where WJCC is. It's just, like, just insert a star or something. It would just, it's just visually.
In the data map, at the very beginning, the big map. Yep, we can do that.
Right. I mean, all it is, is like on PowerPoint, insert a star at the area. And I'm, it's, this is a lot of work, you guys. I'm, it's really difficult to, for all of the teachers and for all the administration to go through everything that they're doing and then to have to do the assessment on top of it is even more work. So I really appreciate the work that our teachers have had to do and that our administration has had to do. What is, of course, super worrisome and concerning to me is the statistic on page 25, because I'm not quite sure. I think Ms. Cook alluded to some of the, some of the statistics. Like on page 25, when you're talking about the number of Ds and Fs for our high school students, you have, you said that in 2020, or we've got 20% of our students are at three or more Ds or Fs. When you look at the numbers from 2019, if I'm doing my math right, that's 7%. So in 2019, we had 7% of our students getting three Ds or Fs and we're now at 20%. And so, once again, if I'm doing my math right, because I'm not sure what the numbers are, the attendance numbers are for 2020.
And you're looking at the high school slide, correct?
Slide number 25. So when I look at that, it's, it is, of course, really concerning because I know you're tracking attendance and the attendance is somewhat, it looks like it's somewhat on par with where we were in 2019, but we're losing students. We are just, we're maybe making sure that they're there, but we're somehow we're losing them.
So it is a challenge, but one point that I do want to remind, keep bringing up, I think, with this data is, when you compare last year with the high school to this year, it's not apples to apples. Yes, there's a gap and we have some work to do, but remember that at this point last year, in the nine-week course, they were halfway through the course and most students were in four classes. So this year, we're only a quarter of the way through the course and students are in eight classes. So they have the opportunity to have more Ds and Fs.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So just, I mean, it's still.
No, it's, that's a good data point for everyone to hear. I don't know how you.
I think one of the things that's happening in all of the schools, even though we're not going to bring secondary students back into the building right now because of the complexity of it and the data, we are looking at small boot camps for students in groups, small groups, where they come into the school, they get remediation in a certain subject. They don't leave that room and then they go home again. So we're starting to isolate pods of students to bring them in to start to work specifically on the subjects in which they're not doing well. And so I think, following the elementary model in a safe way, we believe we can start to get at some of the issues and bring students in for those classes.
And by the way, I totally and 100% support everyone's efforts. I don't, I don't mean to be critical at all of that. I also really support the fact that after many of the school board members have been hearing a lot of concerns about worries about bringing the middle school and high schoolers back to face-to-face instruction, I totally support us taking a pause on that. So, thank you.
Additional comments, feedback? Sandy, Ms. Young?
I just had a question about slide one. I had a question. So immediately after Thanksgiving, week after the people come back from winter break. break, there's going to be remote learning. And what happens? Then they go back to path two? What is happening? Or going back to path three, depending where they are?
After that week, we will bring all of the students who are in already, they will all come back again. So it'll be pre-K through grade five will come back in again. The only thing that will stop that happening will be the data, because if it gets more extreme and we go into red, then everyone will be remote for a period of time. But when we do get back in, whether it's the two weeks in December or whether it's in January, we will start with where we left off, because what's happened is, elementary teachers and schools have learned to do this well. They have mitigation strategies in place, so we don't have to walk in just as slowly, but we need to wait until the data's right to do it. And so we'll start working on the secondary pieces almost immediately after the, well, after the elementary depends on the data. Everything is driven by the data right now.
Absolutely. So when are we looking, are we looking at middle and high school students coming back after the winter?
We're focusing, yes, all of them, whenever the data tells us we can do so, but we're focusing on students who are struggling right now and identifying those through some of the work that's been done for this presentation side and work at every school, bringing students in in small groups first for remediation and for individual help. In every single school, when we go to mid-year meetings in a normal school year, schools literally have lists of every single student, and they know exactly what, where they're underperforming, and they have resources in place, and they can tell you exactly what they're going to do about it. And that's part of our normal process. We're looking for ways to do that virtually or in small groups within the school setting.
So currently, if students are having difficulty, they, and I'm talking about high school, middle school, they are currently being brought in for remediation, is that right?
At the middle school level, we have specific remediation courses built into the elective schedule, but students are working in small groups with teachers. They can sign up with teachers to work on their own as needed, and we're planning, we've started to plan small pockets of remediation to make sure that our seniors are on target for graduation. But continually, in conversations that I've had with principals every day this week, at each quarter, and in like four and a half weeks at interim and at nine weeks, we always run these types of reports. And there's not really a, you know, a fancy way to present a DF report, but they dig into the data, they dig into each individual student, and when we talk about the data walls, I know at the middle schools, they literally have a data wall with every student on it, and they'll have their grades, their attendance, if there's a social emotional need, and really focus in on individualized help for each kid. And it's an ongoing conversation that begins as soon as we start getting grades in, and we're learning to do this in a virtual way now, and we talk about it daily, and that's a skill set that's really growing, and we're meeting kids online.
I guess my question is about these students that are needing remediation. Are we doing any remediation in person in small groups with teachers?
At this point, it's been seniors, and we have some EL students that are coming in in person, some special education students, but we, as far as in-person, no, but we do have small groups. So small groups of students that will meet online with a teacher. Or during the class, the teachers are able to do small groups where students are in different groups based upon a skill set that they need to work on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several questions. The first one has to do with remote testing, whether it's MAPS assessments or just tests in general. How confident are we in taking those assessments at face value? In other words, how, do we suspect or do we fear that students are using help of some kind at home? In other words, is it possible that the assessments that are coming back are better than they would be if the students were in the room without any, whether it's an adult or another...
I'll ask Mr. Walker to address that, maybe with one of the assessments.
I know with the MAPS assessment with the middle school students, they did quite a bit of work training the school teams and the staff who would administer and proctor those testing sessions. So a staff member had to actually start the testing session electronically for the student. They would actually, it's a process of stopping it, and there's someone who's there monitoring it electronically as well. I guess nothing is foolproof with that. I know some students may turn off their camera or something to that effect, but I know they have processes in place, and I can dig into that deeper for you for some additional information from Dr. Kelly.
I'm just, yeah, I'm curious how much we can, you know, hang our hat on some of the achievements that students are having, especially at the upper grades where they might have a handheld device or another laptop or another person in the room who's able to help them be successful in a way that they wouldn't necessarily be able to be if they were alone in a classroom. And so I'm just curious how much we, how much confidence that we can have in these assessments at the upper grades, if that makes any sense.
It makes sense, and I think that's one of our many challenges. We're not in a very normal situation, obviously. I know the teachers at the elementary level were very keen to get the students back two days a week so they could do some of the assessments. It's never going to be perfect, but I think the key is, we've actually made the effort to do those assessments virtually, so we have some sense of progress, and that was a huge undertaking, to actually make that happen and get some outcomes. Nothing is perfect.
Thank you. I'm just, yeah, thinking ahead and being, you know, maybe being, I think, wondering if we'll be surprised when we do get students back in the building, if there's going to maybe be a gap between what we think they know and what they know. I have a question about New Horizons, just this, not to be answered necessarily tonight, but in response to some email we've gotten and then also tonight's call, I just would like to know how many students we currently have that are impacted by that schedule change. I'd just like to get a sense of what that volume is.
Sure, and I can tell you that tomorrow, we, all the high school principals were discussing that we're bringing the data, and so we'll be talking about solutions which we have not, we have not mapped out what the solutions would be at this point. We have ideas, but we're going to work through each schedule with that tomorrow. It is something that we have to work through every year, whether we're in person or whether we are on a schedule which, the schedule that's abbreviated a little bit, because transportation's being an issue. It depends on what location the students are going to, whether it's the Butler Farm or the Newport News, New Horizons, or Gov School, or even TNCC. We have to work out issues with the transition piece, but we're going to take a deep look at that tomorrow, and I can certainly get you the numbers.
Thank you. I'd just like to know how many it impacts.
One of the key issues with that is, all of the school divisions are working in a different way, with slightly different schedules, so New Horizons is trying to match up as best they can, so it's even more complex than it normally is in the environment that we're in.
I can only imagine. And then I still am curious, because we did lose a significant population, and we did, you weren't able to tell us what the demographic population was in the families who chose to go virtual all year, I just still would like to know how the demographic, if there's been a demographic shift from last year to this year in terms of the population that remains. So I'd still like to get a handle on that, if that's at all possible. It could be that people are, I don't know, maybe they're not filling out free and reduced lunch requests now, and so we don't know, but if that, I'd like to know if it's knowable and if it is, what it is. I just want to know if there's been a shift from last year, because that'll give us a sense of which families left the division. And then, I just, my last comment really has to do with messaging. You know, I appreciate that you're not going to bring, that you're going to go to virtual after Thanksgiving and the winter break. I think that's very smart. But in order for that strategy to be successful, people have to behave in a way that makes that time valuable in terms of behavior, and so I'm hoping that we are messaging that, that, you know, if we want to come back a week later, people have to behave over the holidays and socially distance. But anyway, thank you for all of this data. I really, it's a lot to absorb. I want to read it again and take it in. I probably have some more questions, but, you know, some of it's sobering. I understand what you were saying, Dr. Worley, about it's a different, it's not apples to apples, but it's pretty sobering, particularly at the upper grades, so.
Dal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for this report, very thorough, and it really kind of, it did drill down for me any of the questions that I was looking to have answered, and in particular, the number of students that we're unaccounted for. Trying to follow the numbers according to grade levels, it looks like we're down to two. Is that right?
That's correct.
Down to two, that's excellent. That's fantastic. One of my questions in regards to that, and I guess it's also in relation to the decline in grades, DNF grades, is it looked like a good number of these students were not checking into VIEW, but you were able to locate them otherwise. How, what are the various, I guess, online learning applications that are being used by various different teachers? You mentioned VIEW, Canvas, we know that they're using Zoom. Are there many other applications that are being used? Can you talk about that?
I know as a division, we listened to the feedback from last spring and tried to streamline that because it became very difficult for our families, especially when we had children at multiple levels, and we had teachers using multiple modes of communication and different avenues with that. And so we listened to that piece, and we tried to streamline that in. I do know that there are other components that some teachers have continued to utilize. I'll give you one example. I know at the elementary level, some teachers enjoy using the Seesaw application.
It's the school system.
Which allows teachers, a very interactive two-way piece, and actually, I've watched kindergarten students upload work on an iPad to it, and parents can log in during their lunch break at work and make a comment right on the child's work. That's just one example, but we've really tried to pull that in from listening to what our families asked for.
Right, so that effort's already underway.
So basically, all of the secondary courses are in one place, Canvas. That's where the students go. It's all been consolidated into one place. The one key communication tool with families and students is VIEW. Remind is an app that teachers are using to communicate with students and parents, and that's now across the whole system and the one that is most used. So we've managed to bring it from here to here so that there's, so that parents know where to go to get the information. And that's a constant work to keep that going, and I don't know if Dr. Worley or Mr. Walker can think of any other obvious ones I've missed.
I would just say that anything that may be a supplemental resource at the secondary level, that the teacher connects the student with that through Canvas or in the Zoom meeting through a link, but everything is housed in Canvas.
But everything is submitted, all work is submitted through Canvas. Rates are received through VIEW.
Yes. And even Zoom has been brought into VIEW for protection. So it's all in one place. That's the main thing the teacher goes to work through.
Thank you. Another question that's really kind of burdensome to me is, you know, looking at 803, and I crunch the numbers a little differently, I, with increase against last year, looks like 212% increase for students of three or more Ds or Fs from last year. High school, 94% increase for middle school. Those are big jumps, 800 students, 212% increase. I would like to hear a little bit about what the remediation looks like. Can you share what that looks like for middle school and high school?
Sure, so.
Manpower, I guess, in particular, what I'm looking to hear about is manpower. Do we have the availability to do that in such a short amount of time, knowing that, you know, it's four classes, excuse me, four more classes than last year in comparison?
So middle and high school are a little different. So at the middle school level, the principals have the luxury of having some remediation classes built into the actual elective time, so as they assess at each quarter, at four and a half weeks, nine weeks, they're able to take looks, look at groups of students, and if they need intensified remediation in an area, they can put them in the math or English remediation course. Teachers are all of the time looking at grades, dissecting and identifying groups of students that need extra help, where typically be an after-school remediation. Now there's an opportunity to do groups through Zoom during the day and small groups during class or after school on the same, on the Fridays, when they can have time dedicated to intervention. At the high school level, again, the numbers, there is a challenge there with that, but we do have significantly more time for this part. And one other point with last year's data at this time, they were halfway through the course, and the teachers are constantly giving students opportunities to review work, make up work, turn in work again, and they'll review skill sets with them. And when you're halfway through the course, the push is even a little more for that, which is where we were this time last year. So we are constantly looking at that right now. The principals were talking to me today at the high school level about how they just, they dig through these reports every year. What they're doing right now is something they would have done last year too, except the difference is, they're looking at how are they going to support these efforts virtually? How are we going to make the small groups meet virtually? How are we going to divide our students up for SOL remediation when we get to that virtually, if we have to, or in person, with the ability to go back and forth? So that's one of the focus areas, that they want to have the skill set there so that our teachers are prepared. If we're in person, we do it, we know how to do in person, and we have to flip the switch and do it virtually, we're going to do that.
My last question, and thank you for that. Building up to this point, now that we know what these numbers look like, I'm curious, did we have a sense of kind of mutual cooperation between the home parents or students emailing in, calling in, saying, this is what's happening? How do we get ahead of this? Did we have any kind of mutual cooperation in that way? Or is there just a all hands off, let's just get through it on the part of the home, on the part of the home? Do you understand my question?
I can give you some anecdotal information from visiting the elementary schools. I've heard from many elementary teachers as well as principals stating they've had drastic increase in the number of conferences they're having with parents that are happening electronically, those spur-of-the-moment pieces at the end of a Zoom lesson with a parent asking a teacher, can you stay on for just one minute after the whole group lesson I'd like to talk to you about? And the fact that they have those virtual office hours every Friday, they've been utilized quite a bit. I hear that anecdotally throughout my visits to the nine elementary schools. I do believe our families are initiating and wanting to be part of that in a partnership at the elementary level, and I know that could look a little differently at middle and high school.
You know, they definitely want to be a part of that, and I think teachers reach out and they have extra opportunity built in their time for office hours and the electronic means of communicating, but I can get you some more specific data on that if that was something that you need, but absolutely, you know, the partnership is there, and I hear stories as well of not only, you know, conferences and over Zoom or the phone, but a lot of our staff members are doing home visits and reaching out to families and providing support. There's many stories out there of some of our staff, people going out where there's a language barrier, where we're, you know, translating many more documents that we send out. So there's definitely, you know, a partnership there on both sides, but we do know that there are some students that we need to reach, you know, continue to support.
Yeah, so the, I guess the impetus behind my interest in this is that, I know it's not just the teachers that are directly engaged with the students, it's not just the parents that are looking over their shoulder, it's our principals, assistant principals, it's our counselors. Going back to my question about personnel availability for remediation, do we have enough to do that? And I guess that was one of the indicators that I was looking for, is that mutual cooperation? And I guess that was one of the indicators that I was looking for, is that mutual cooperation upfront on this end of it before we get to a greater problem? Has there been an indication of, I guess, parental engagement saying, don't leave us behind? You know, we need a little bit more focus and a little bit more attention. My student needs this. So yeah, a little bit more information would be good, if you wouldn't mind. I'd like to know what that looks like from, I guess, a holistic perspective, counselors and principals. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Dow. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Heron, I know you made the statement that it's been a difficult decision to not move forward. Frankly, during this whole pandemic, the only easy decision was made on March 13th, which was to close schools. Everything after that has been hard and difficult, and it's also, it also would be a difficult decision to move forward. So both of those were, that's just a very difficult decision. I do appreciate the way that WJCC has moved forward, data-driven decisions and really, you know, looking at the, looking at the data versus the emotion and doing our best to keep everybody engaged in the decision. I think, I think as Mrs. Cook said, it's prudent to not go back after Thanksgiving for that first week. Hopefully, we won't be red and that decision won't be maybe be made for us. Looking at our seven-day trend line, it doesn't look good that it's not going to be red. So then we have the complication of the Thanksgiving holiday that's going to keep moving that Dr. Worley, I hear you about the, it's only, it's only, we're only a quarter way through the class versus halfway through the class as we were this time last year. That's, that's a very glass-half-full approach. Glass-half-empty is, do you have this many teachers, this many kids failing after four and a half weeks last year as you do now at nine weeks? So that's, it's very concerning to me, and so we're going to really have to, you know, put some mitigation strategies and really, really address that. So I appreciate that. Appreciate that this is really kind of the first data look that we have at those grades now after the first nine weeks, but you know, we have some, we have some work to do there to try to patch those, patch those holes up. We mentioned several times about attendance and how time-consuming and all that it is. We think we're getting value for that investment of our time, because I know I get a lot of feedback from a lot of elementary school teachers that they're taking attendance and then they have to report it at every, at every, at every Zoom class that they have and they're virtual. Is it better to have them report half the time, who's attendance versus every time? Because, you know, if it is so time-consuming, and I know it's time-consuming by the elementary teachers, that they, they're doing that on probably what a lot of them think is non-value-added, is taking attendance versus teaching kids. So I just, I'd just like to get your thoughts on that.
So I can say that our attendance that we've worked through for this multi-tiered system of support does follow a state superintendent memo. It is looking for meaningful interaction between a student and a staff member. When they're in person, that's pretty quick, easy. We can take the attendance, boom, we've got it, it's done for that day. The three days of remote at home is the challenge. And if a student engages in meaningful interaction, and I gave several examples of that, even if it's one time for that day, they are counted present for that day. So therefore, we have as a system a generated report that's being sent to each elementary school by about 7:30 a.m. each morning. The school registrar is receiving that. So there's one level of support. Classroom teachers doing the attendance in person. Then, as I mentioned, the checks and the rechecks with, what about my students who are at home, the remote part? And that's where that additional layer comes in, but it's one meaningful interaction for the day. That may not show up until a child who, who may not have access or be able to get on until five, six o'clock that evening. That's why we're having to recheck each day. And we have our centers teachers, art, music, PE, computer teachers at the elementary level, who are also checking because they have asynchronous work that is posted up for students to access during their at-home three days. That counts for meaningful interaction. So if a student is able to log on for that day and do something with the PE work, that counts as being present for that whole day.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's, you know, it also, for the week after Thanksgiving, it's going to be five days there when they're all, when everybody's remote. So I just, I just want to make sure that we're critically looking at what we're, what we're asking of our teachers, and if we're really getting value out of that. I, I kind of appreciate Dr. Lane's memo too, but it was likely written in a different time and a different place than where we are now. So just, just something, something to think about, about whether we are doing the right things there. I also, I appreciate Mrs. Cook's questions about New Horizons and Governor School and the complications with that, and I hope we can come to a resolution on that. It is a lot of data, a lot of stuff, a lot of, a lot of information to wade through, and so I look forward to kind of jumping into that over the next week or so, and I might have additional questions as well. But I appreciate all the energy that was put, put together to put this together and all the work by the admin, administration and the staff and our teachers to coalesce all this and gather this. So it's, it's a lot of work, so. But as, as has been stated, it's also, there's also, it shows us that we have some challenges and we have some actions that we need to go to, to patch some holes in the ship, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I just have a couple of questions and comments building on the questions about remediation. We talked about the pods, particularly at the secondary level. So do we have a date and time for when the in-person remediation via the pods will happen?
We started a little bit of the remediation for, that we mentioned earlier, for juniors and seniors for verified credits, and the teachers now are planning, obviously, looking at the data, who needs remediation opportunities? And as we look at the data metrics and plan for our timeline and discuss as a leadership team, we will set the opportunity and give the principals the opportunity to bring those students in.
I guess, would it, would it be possible that some of those students who are the most at risk at the secondary level, that we might bring them in even before we bring back, say, the sixth grade and 12th grade?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then getting back to Mr. Dow's comments about parental engagement, have you, have you found, or do we know, are teachers feeling overwhelmed with the amount of parental involvement with emailing and questioning, like, is, to Mr. Kelly's point, like, are we, are we overburdening our teachers with questions?
I believe our teachers are, many of them are perfectionists, and they want to go over and beyond, and it is stressful. And we really appreciate what they're doing, and they're really trying to serve our students, serve parents, go the extra mile even more so in this environment. And yes, it's stressful, I'm sure.
I think, I think probably maybe in some respects, parents are more engaged because I think there's more questions, and then I just know, when I come home at lunchtime and I listen to conversations that my student, my own children's teachers are having, there's often, you know, I haven't had a chance to get back to that email just yet, so I just, for the community to know, I think that our teachers are getting lots of questions and feedback.
In ways, their class size has just doubled, right? I mean.
Yes, they've got the students and the parents. So.
I would add that that was kind of the point that I was making.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Concern going forward.
Yeah. And then I just appreciate the fact and want to point out the distinct differences between our elementary instruction and our secondary instruction with regard to return to learn. And so we have found that our K3 and now our 4, 5 grades are in that safe bubble, and we can keep those children contained and related. Arts aren't, they're not leaving the classroom, and secondary, as pointed out so eloquently at last week's meeting, is just a whole nother beast. And so I just want the community to understand that, that it's, secondary is just not, it's just not contained, there's just not that bubble. It's just, it's more moving parts, more things to consider. And then just wanted to ask a question, going back to last week's meeting, you talked about surveying parents who have chosen Virtual Academy for the whole year and asking those parents to respond back to us by November 30, if that's still their intent, or if they want to come and be a part of the paths. That's, that's, that's still our plan, but if there, if people choose to come back to the paths and leave the Virtual Academy, will we, how will we or will we communicate to families who might want to then be a part of the Virtual Academy?
We're going to have to look at the data first and look at what spaces might be available. I do know we're starting to look at those students who maybe have medical issues or medically fragile and maybe should have made that choice in the first place. And there are some families and students who arrived late in our system and didn't have the opportunity to make a choice. So we're looking at different levels of those that have already communicated with us about their needs, and we'll know more when we see the numbers.
And so possibly after the Thanksgiving holiday, we would kind of have an idea of...
I don't, we've always said that students in general couldn't move in. I think there would have to be a compelling reason to offer open choice to everybody right now would be impossible. Every teacher would get a different student, students would get a different teacher.
That's not what...
The feedback we would get would be horrible, it would be disruptive to the learning process. So we're walking very cautiously through what that's going to look like while trying to serve students who really cannot be in a physical classroom right now.
Right, and to that point, I do know of some families who, while the child is not, maybe doesn't have medical issues, that their family dynamics have changed, right? Grandma's living with them or grandpa, things, things have changed within that family dynamic. So if there would be an opportunity to consider medical issues, not just for the child, but for the people that the child lives with?
We certainly, we'll be looking at everything. We just can't have open choice again because students are in classes and are doing well. And we're looking at it, we'll know more on November 30th.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there any additional questions or comments?
I appreciate the transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of work, thank you. We all have our homework due. Right, moving on to item 10.2, capital improvement plan discussion. So each of us had kind of a first blush last week to share our thoughts and questions, but we've had an opportunity to spend a week looking at the proposed CIP. Now it's time to discuss. Who would like to lead off?
Madam Chair, I'll lead off.
Mr. Dow, thank you.
Well, you know, I never, never like to appear to be a contrarian, but I'm just not enthusiastic about this CIP. And I've discussed it with a few of my colleagues here. I personally would, especially after getting the Future Think information and certainly after tonight, getting the information that we received about grades and, and engagement, this elementary school discussion, I think, is just, it's, from my point of view, just out of, out of perspective, to be within the 24, 25 school year. If you asked me where I would put it, I wouldn't have a good answer because no, no one in this room really knows what COVID is going to continue to do to our school population, to the outlook of our students' grades and performance. And so I wouldn't have a really good answer for it. When we kind of discussed it a little more than a month ago, you know, I thought, you know, let's bring preschool space up in the CIP closer to us, it's not on the CIP, and then let's push our elementary school back and give us more time to see what COVID does to our, to our student population. Right now, we're in a space where our locality is in a higher rate of transmission. I look at that, I see it. We don't exactly know the cause of it, but we do, we can expect that Thanksgiving, Christmas time coming, we hope that we can put adequate messaging out there where families will be respectful, responsible, and be ready to reengage in the classroom. But again, we're at a wait-and-see kind of place there. Reduced elementary population as it is now, there's no indication when or if, you know, students will return. It's been said that we've essentially lost an elementary school as it is, and again, not knowing when they might return is problematic. I know that there are colleagues here that are more optimistic than me, that once we get past Phase 4, we're going to see students return in droves. I'm not one of those that believes that. I think that our students that have a, have taken this, and our families have taken this as a unique opportunity to go out there and see what homeschool looks like, how to get it, how to get there and how to do it, how to be successful in the homeschool. We've had students and families that have decided, you know, we're going to go private or even Virginia Virtual, and before, they had no idea how they were going to make that happen. They're making it happen. So I want to be a little bit more cautious in the CIP. Hey Frank, I, I think that, I think of the two trailers that we, this board, and I was a part of this decision to purchase, because though we were at the start of a pandemic, I believed very optimistically, like many of my colleagues here, that we were going to be able to get back to in-person, and those schools were going to be, were going to still have the overcrowding issues, and those trailers were going to be needed, needed now, and so I agree with that, and we got trailers there, and I believe trailers are there, or they're being built. They're there, Mr. Snipes, yeah? But they're not being used, right? And we're not sure that they will be used after Thanksgiving.
The Stonehouse trailer, students are back in Stonehouse two days a week.
Matthew Welly's.
And Matthew Welly's trailers are certainly being used as well.
Matthew Welly's was already there, right?
Correct.
Added an additional trailer.
And it was Jamestown, right?
Jamestown and Stonehouse this year.
The Jamestown is the one that I'm really thinking of, that is not being used now, may not be used in, for quite a while, depending on what it looks like when we come back from the holiday break. I hesitate to make a decision similar to that, where we're looking forward to the future in an optimistic way, wanting to be, do right by our students and by our educators, creating more space, but the numbers won't substantiate that decision. 5,019 elementary school students, we've lost essentially an elementary school. I think the number was 4,700 elementary school students, and there was really no indication from Future Think of why they recommended going from moderate, from low to moderate, other than it presents a better outlook. From what I heard, it presents a better outlook and a stronger case that, you know, we're going to have fuller classrooms. That's kind of how I took it, that explanation. I didn't really kind of buy the, the decision to go from low to medium projection. For all those reasons, I, you know, again, if you asked me where you put an elementary school, it's not, it's not in the 24, 25 year. And I understand that this isn't a next-year CIP issue. I get that, I do. But where is this now? To me, looking at it pragmatically, it looks like you position yourself to make a decision, right? You've got to start looking at location, you've got to start looking at what students go where, and you've got to start purchasing plans and architectural designs. I just don't think that we're there yet, and for all those reasons, I'm not really thrilled about the CIP.
Mr. Dow, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have sort of five areas I'd like to talk about. The first is sort of maintenance, and the second is sort of the procedural piece, and then I'd like to talk about high school, and then elementary school, and then pre-K. So the first is the operational, or I mean, the sort of maintenance piece rather. A lot of what's in this CIP for maintenance is based on principal input and then also the facility conditions index, which is six years old, is that right, Mr. Snipes? All right. How often should a school division complete a new facilities and conditions index to keep current on, on that?
Condition indexes last for 10 years.
10 years, okay.
And our plan, of course, is about the six or seven year mark to start planning for another facility condition.
So that's in your workflow, you're working on that? Okay, thank you. And then my next question has to do with partial refurbishment, specifically in this case for War Hill, but in general. I know you used to, on a regular schedule, do a complete refurbishment, whether it was sort of on a regular schedule. And then for, to be fiscally conservative, you've shifted to a partial refurbishment to only refurbish that which requires it, is that correct?
That's correct.
So how often do you do those partial refurbishments?
Well, refurbishments is just like our HVAC programs or a systems condition index?
Uh huh.
Where you look at if a carpet needs to be replaced or if a tile needs to be replaced rather than replacing the entire tile or carpet throughout the building. We went to that a few years ago, looking at systems versus total.
Okay. So when you do that, do you do it then with more frequency? Because if you're looking at that carpet or that tile and in that year it doesn't need to be replaced, but it might not make it as long as the new tile that you just put in, instead of doing it, I'm making this up every 10 years, do you do it every five years on a partial basis? Does that make sense?
It, it does, that does make sense. I can only give you an example. For example, Stonehouse was built in 2000 and the tile there has been upkept very well. So you wouldn't go through and replace all the tile. You look at those on a year by year basis to look at your work orders and determine if that needs to be done. Since refurbishments are carpet, paint and tile, that's not in, in something that is going to happen immediately. That is, is a gradual change. For example, as carpet starts to wear, you see wear patterns, you determine if you, if they need to be replaced. So to answer that question of a partial refurbishment and then you need to do another one every five years, I think because we are on a system replacement, we look at those things annually to determine when they need to be replaced. And because they don't need to be replaced immediately, you can place them in the outer years.
Okay. So if we do this partial refurbishment for, at War Hill, for instance, in a couple of years, we're not going to say to the War Hill community, I know that doesn't look so, so great right now, it looks a little shabby, but we just did the partial refurbishment, so you're going to have to wait another six years until the next one comes along. I mean, you're going to be doing it kind of an ongoing basis.
We look at them ongoing.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we weren't being penny wise and dollar foolish, if you will. My next series of questions has to do with sort of process. And Mr. Dowell mentioned this, the Future Think for both planning and budgeting, we're going to be shifting. And I don't, I don't disagree with that, but it is not consistent with what we have talked about with our localities. So I think either through, you know, Ms. Ombi sharing with the, you know, chief electeds or through liaison or something, we need to convey that we have shifted that thinking, probably temporarily, but I think we need to be really transparent with that because it is different from what we have previously agreed to resolution. So.
We will have an opportunity, Ms. Cook, to share it in the, in the joint meeting on December 4th.
Okay. And so will that be in your talk?
And explain our, why we're using the projections and why it's so different this year.
Okay, thank you very much. And so not to, not to spoil alert here, but I absolutely support the elementary school in the first five years. And so to that end, I think we also need to ask, whether it's at this joint meeting or through Ms. Ombi or through liaison, we really, I think, need to ask the localities to start looking for land. I think that conversation has been passive in the past, but I think we need to start being as a board a little bit more aggressive about asking to go into closed session and asking for, you know, sort of conversations around where a new elementary school is going to go, because we know we're going to need that. Another question, a procedural kind of question or comment I had is, last year when our CIP went through the James City County Planning Commission process, which is a little different than the city process, the city process is a little bit, the James City County process is unique, let me put it that way. There were some planning commissioners that asked questions and it occurred to me that they did so because they didn't have the same information that the board of supervisors had. And so my request is when we get this adopted and then we send it to the board of supervisors, if we could make sure that they convey somehow that information gets to the planning commission. And I'm talking about the joint resolution on what triggers the need for new facilities, the 85%, 90%. So that they have the picture of why we're asking for what we're asking for. Because last year there were some questions that really were answerable had they had that information. And apparently it wasn't conveyed to them through the county. So I think we need to take responsibility for doing that and making sure they get that with whatever materials we send over. Also, another process sort of question or comment is about central office. That's not in this CIP and I appreciate the notation with regard to that. But James City County, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, they, they just saw their space needs study and they've talked about doing a master plan. And I think in, in, in that master plan, they envisioned central office going in there. And so that may alter our CIP or central office may go somewhere else. So I, I think that's something that we also need to talk about, whether, you know, where central office goes and even though it's not in our CIP and what's going to drive the need for us to have central offices and extension or expansion rather of Blair to, to a full school instead of a half school. But I just want to throw that out there because it is a capital need and it's something that was discussed at the last meeting of the board of supervisors. So on to high schools. I have a question about the War Hill auxiliary gym design. I asked that, is that, have you issued a RFP for that design? Where, where does that stand?
We just received word from the county that we can move forward with that project. So we'll be working on getting RFP out for that design.
Thank you very much. And then, you know, I, I agree that, and thank you for the pivot in high school space. I don't think we know what high school instruction is going to look like. COVID may have changed it permanently and, and the impact on space, I think, is, is to be determined. So I think the pivot to separating the cafeteria from, from the expansion of Jamestown and going ahead and, and meeting that immediate need for Jamestown is good, so thank you. And then recapturing the space for Lafayette is, is a good idea. So I appreciate that very much and support it. And I'm curious what will happen? There are, there is, I know CDR is going to vacate, but there's other, there are other programs and activities under, in that space. What will happen to those while that space is being renovated? Have you thought that far?
CDR is, their date for, for leaving that space is May 31st, 2022, which is the design of reconfiguration of that space will happen just before then and that's when construction will actually start in that same summer. The programs that currently exist there would potentially stay there. They would be temporarily relocated and brought back to that space.
But you haven't figured out where they temporarily?
We're not, not for the relocation because it's still two years out, because we're not adding on the rooms at War Hill or Jamestown that originally we were going to move the programs there.
I think you. And so now I guess like to talk about elementary school. And I'm going to have to disagree with my colleague about that, about the need for it. I think that this hiccup in, in enrollment, and I do think it's a hiccup, has provided us important breathing room, but I think that's all it's provided us. I, I don't think that asking for the elementary school is about getting ready for future growth. I think it's responding to growth that's already happened. And so I think the need persists without, I think even if those students don't come back in the next three, four years, we're still at, given our own criteria, at a point of where we would normally be planning, which is why I think this is breathing room. I, I think it is appropriately placed in the five-year CIP. I think it's appropriate to not ask for design money in, in the next fiscal year because we aren't certain. And so I think giving that breathing room and that pause is wise, but, but I think we will find ourselves needing a school sooner rather than later. And I think that we made the case for an elementary school and I don't think the pandemic changes that really at all. But I do also want to explore what I asked about at the last meeting and talk about if this breathing room that it's given us allows us an opportunity to more systematically look at that, that class size discussion that you've been having with your staff, Dr. Heron. And I think what I'd really like to better understand is if we could put class size where we know it needs to be to serve the students that we have. And given the population in each school, how many extra trailers would we need at each school to make that happen? I'd, I'd really like to know that so that, you know, back to what the board of supervisors talked about at their meeting is really, you know, rightsizing and thinking into the future and allowing ourselves the facilities to grow into. We've, we've always waited until we were overcrowded to build and I'd like to see that dynamic change. And I would just like to get a sense of how much elementary school space we need, even with the current population, if we were meeting the class size that we know they need, given the demographic nature of our student population. Does that make sense, Dr. Heron?
No.
Okay, thank you. I know I've been long-winded. And then the last thing I want to talk about is pre-K. And just to say thank you for taking it off the 10-year plan. I think last year we put it on the out years to signify and to signal that we were willing to have that discussion. And I think that frankly, that changing, I think our funding body telling us to build space with a programmatic intent was an overreach and really not appropriate. And so I think that building pre-K space at this time would be really an inappropriate use of taxpayer dollars. The state is rethinking pre-K, not just public pre-K, but pre-K as a whole right now. We know CDR needs space for early head start and other early childhood needs. We know that Community Action Agency is seeking space for head start. And we haven't yet had the conversation about rightsizing enrollment for bright beginnings in terms of the mix between at-risk and special ed. And we really need a community-wide discussion to talk about it. And the localities need to lead that. We cannot lead that. And they're in the process of doing that and I appreciate that. It got a little bit of a bumpy start and put on hold because of the pandemic, but, and we've talked about it in liaison and we will bring it up again in liaison. But unless and until we have that conversation, designing or talking about any kind of pre-K space is really premature, the only time it would be appropriate to build or design pre-K space would either be after we've had a community-wide discussion or if we've given up on a community-wide discussion and decide to move unilaterally in a vacuum, which I would not support. But, so I think building pre-K space is, it would be a really inappropriate thing to do unless we've tried and succeeded or tried and failed to have that pre-K conversation. So, and as, you know, as was noted at the last meeting, building additions, you know, isn't always the most effective use of public dollars, particularly when it comes to, when they weren't designed for, for that, that size. So anyway, so I appreciate that you did that to pre-K and I think it was exactly the right thing to do. So thank you and as a result, I fully support the CIP. I'll vote for it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
I guess I was going to jump in, right about where Ms. Cook left off about preschool space, because for, for me, looking at the CIP and looking at the elementary school, I mean, a lot of our pre, our kinder, our elementary school space right now is used for pre-K, the buildings that have it. And so I, I, and I am concerned about the effect that the pandemic has had on enrollment. But, but for me, I think this discussion about preschool space is really critical to, to our future plans for, for us as a school division. And I, I believe that because the board of supervisors or at least two members of the board of supervisors have voiced that they feel like they, we should have preschool space separate from school buildings. And, and if that is the case, then that, that is a completely different discussion than building an elementary school. And so it's really hard to make these decisions without having this, this very, and I think it needs to be a very wide public discussion, what the community would like. And, and it hasn't happened yet. So for, for me, looking at the new elementary school space, and I am aware of the 85%, the 90% and those figures that trigger the need for a new elementary school, I don't know that we're ready to have that discussion until we've had the discussion about preschool space. And I agree with Ms. Cook that I don't know that that is our purview. If the board of supervisors would like us to have that discussion, then we need to be engaged in that discussion. And of course, with, with COVID right now, that makes it really hard to do anything, especially looking like we're going to be more locked down. So I'm very concerned about where we are with our need for elementary space. Looking at the CIP, I, I think we're premature in having 24, 25. I would like it pushed back at least, at least another year. And Ms. Cook talked about, about giving us breathing room. I, I don't know that I call this breathing room. I don't know if this is a stopgap measure and, and we're just living in la la land or, but I'm very concerned because A, I don't, I don't want our elementary schools overcrowded and we know that several of them are very overcrowded at this point. But will they be overcrowded in the future? We don't know that. So to me, there's a lot of unanswered questions and I guess that's why I would prefer that we were, at least gave ourselves another year. But again, if we come back from COVID and find ourselves overloaded in all of our elementary schools, we haven't done service to our students. And I do agree about the rightsizing. As having 20, I mean, having been an elementary teacher, I think having too many kids in a classroom doesn't, you, you're always worried about the kid, the quiet student, the student that needs extra help, that never says anything that you're aware of. So I think that is a consideration for having a new elementary school, but that's a lot of tax dollars. So I guess my number one request is that we would have that discussion about preschool space and then make a decision about a new school. See what else did I have on here? I think most of my concern is I, I'm, I want to work in cooperation with our funding partners. That's an important thing. And I think since I've been on the school board with the liaison meetings and knowing more about each other and about our various responsibilities, I want that relationship to stay strong and to continue to grow. I don't want to jeopardize it over a discussion about preschool. I think somehow if we can boost that and encourage that discussion to, to be started and somehow get that going, that would, I think that, especially if we go forward with the idea that we are going to build an elementary school, I think to have that decision and that idea taken care of would, would benefit both of us, would benefit the board of supervisors that feel more comfortable with us building an elementary school. And it would benefit our, our citizens also, knowing that we're on solid ground with demographic information, statistics. So I would really like to push having that discussion about preschool space. And other than that, I support, I do appreciate the fact that things were moved back as we knew that tax dollars for state funding was going to be an issue this year. And I guess that my only question for Mr. Snipes, I know, and it's kind of a foolish one, but I noticed that at Tufts, there is a partial, and I've been thinking about this, what is a partial, if I can find it real quickly here? and I've been thinking about this, what is a partial, if I can find it real quickly here? I think it's a restroom refurbishment? I don't know what that really means.
That would mean replacing some sinks, some stalls, and urinals and toilets. It might also mean glazing of the tiles on the wall or raising the ceiling in some of the grids in some of the restrooms.
How old is our building at Tuana?
Tuana was built in 1992. Let me see, construction of Tuana, 1992.
Eight years old?
Forty-eight.
You're that right? It's kind of what, oh, okay, you answered that question, but thank you. And I do appreciate the 10-year plan, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the effort that's put into to make this capital plan and for the 10 years by staff, Mr. Snipes' folks, I really, I know how these things go, and I understand the amount of work and consideration that has to be done in this. But I think, I think, I think we're all in unison on the first five pages of the plan. Page six has all the conversation. I don't think the whole baby's bad. I don't think we throw the whole thing out of the bathwater, but we get to page six. So for CDR to stay at Lafayette, do you need a board action on that? Didn't, weren't we pretty specific about them getting out?
Yes, the board has voted that their contract will end or they're staying, and that building will end at that date in time.
So we need to address that so that they can stay longer if it comes that way, right?
We decided as a board, they have an end date. That is the end date. That was decided by this board.
So that's, okay, so we're followed on that, all right. Does that make sense? I understand, I understand the conversations that the long-term impacts of COVID to our enrollment. I also agree that nobody knows how we're going to recover from this. The Future Think report they gave us last year turned out to be completely off base from where we are. And so they gave us one this year, and while I think it's important that they did, we just don't know how it's going to play out. We don't know how soon we're going to recover and how that goes. I appreciate Mr. Dowell's comments about people exploring homeschool, people exploring private schools, and that some of those may not come back. They do tend to come back in middle school and high school. But, so we're kind of really looking at the kids coming up, who are being born now and where they're going to go to school and where that's going to play out. This is a hiccup, and it's going to, and the question is, how soon are we going to recover? I'd tell you that last year, with everything I saw, we were too full. There was, from both the teacher perspective and the teachers', you know, teachers' lounge, a lot of the amenities that we have for teachers were turned into learning space and not what should be for the employees and some of their, some of their, some of their use. I'm concerned about the growth in the county. I'm concerned about how that's been facilitated by what happens with 64. We have a lot of building permits that have been issued and have not been started, and I keep seeing a lot of construction. We have talked at length about high school curriculum and how that will change as a result of this, where we're more exclusive to remote learning. And although I think we've seen today that some of that doesn't work for high schools, some high school kids. But, you know, that could potentially be a paradigm in the future. We also have to kind of consider what's going to happen at the elementary level. Right now, each classroom is half-full. So is that going to be what the class size is going to be? Or is it going to be, instead of going back to where we were, is it going to be 2/3 of that? And if it's 2/3 of that, we need more classrooms. I don't think it's premature to put the elementary school into the five-year plan, whether it's where it is now or, as Ms. Young said, push it out a year. I think, I think it needs to be on the agenda. I think it needs to be part of the conversation. There is other piece, other piece that we should, we should also kind of talk to, too, is those kids that stay are likely to be the kids that have more needs than the kids that go to the private school and go to homeschool. There are going to be more of the English language learners, going to be more of the special ed, going to be more of those, of those kids that are going to need additional services and are going to need smaller space, smaller space learning, smaller group learning, more one-on-one, more small group. And so I think, I think that, as Mrs. Cook said, pushing it, pushing it out gives us time to understand what those long-term impacts are going to be or get a better understanding. Because frankly, end of the day, we're not through this right now. I'm not sure that we're halfway through this right now. I'm hoping that we are. Hoping a vaccine comes out on Monday and it's all gone by Friday, and we're all good by Saturday. I just don't see it. So, so I think keeping it on the plan, keeping it in the county's financial horizon to kind of think about how we're going to do this and also the 10% of the city. I think that's important, but it's, and I don't think we need to push it out into the, into the 10 years. I think, I think where it is or a year to the right, maybe, I can, I could live with that, too, because it's not next year. I think, I think that elementary school, I think that elementary school is needed. I think it needs to be in the plan, and I think it needs to be front end of the plan versus the back end of the plan for all those, for all those reasons. So I'm supportive of this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Young? I mean, Mrs. Hummel?
She does look young.
She's so young.
Thanks. I'm also looking at page six like we all are. I, my feeling is that we're going to be dealing with some, the fallout of COVID well into next academic year. There's just no way that I can foresee that this vaccine's going to be rolled out and given to every single person, every teacher, every student by August of next year. Maybe I'm wrong, but I just don't envision that. So I think that we won't know for two or three years what our real numbers are going to be coming back. On the other hand, I totally agree with my school board colleagues about keeping the elementary school in the, in the five-year plan. I kind of am leaning towards supporting Ms. Young's idea of pushing it back just one year, but keeping it in the five-year plan. Also agree totally with the fact that we need to have a community-wide discussion about exactly how we're going to handle preschool. It needs to be something that we are totally transparent with all members of the community, including our funding partners, and getting everyone on board so that we are moving forward as a community in some kind of consensus about how we want to educate our very youngest and most vulnerable populations and what's the best way to go and move forward with that. So that, that's it. I just, I would like to keep the school, I support the CIP. The only thing I could possibly see is maybe moving the elementary school back just, just one year. But if it's not moved back one year, that's fine, too.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I agree with many of my colleagues and will repeat some common themes because I think they're important to be repeated. So I am in support of this proposed CIP. I think division staff and the board have taken a fiscally responsible approach to looking at our long-term capital needs. In response to COVID and the ensuing economic uncertainty, the large high school expansion projects have been pushed out, and I think that makes sense. But as Ms. Cook said, keeping those smaller, more immediate need projects in the five-year is important. Jamestown is busting at the seams, and so they certainly need to have cafeteria space immediately. Building the War Hill Auxiliary Gym is an equity issue, bringing parity with the other two high schools that have aux gyms. And then, of course, reclaiming that space at Lafayette is long overdue and is a no-brainer in my, in my mind, because that space is there and we can modify that relatively inexpensively. With respect to the 10th Elementary School, we still need it. We needed it three years ago. And as folks have mentioned tonight, we all agreed as three bodies what those trigger points would be. At 85%, we would start talking about it. At 90%, we would begin to act on it, recognizing three years ago that we were already at 90%. So last year's effective capacity was at 98%. We did make that very clear, that our teachers' professional space had been reclaimed. We were using space underneath stairs to educate our most vulnerable students. Teachers had no lounges. Teachers had no place to store their materials. And even right now, with our temporary, and I'll stress, temporary reduction with students because of COVID, we're still at 89.6%. We're still right at that threshold. And as spoken about tonight by this board and one of our callers, I think that if we were to really consider lowering class size, which I believe would be in the best educational interest of our students because of COVID slide, right? We know it. We looked at the data tonight. We see where our kids are at. Plus, we also know that our demographics are changing drastically, as mentioned tonight. And as the last four years that I've served on this board, our numbers of special education students are going up. Our English language students are going up. Our economically disadvantaged students are going up. We have three times the homeless students in the entire state, and we have COVID slide. So I think for us to be naive, or for anyone in the community to be naive and to think that we're going to be able to educate our children the way that we did a year ago or five years ago is just not in the best interests of our students. We need to have smaller class sizes. We need to be able to, to work with our students more one-on-one to meet the needs. And I just want to point it out, the families who had the ability to leave our division, and those kids go to private schools, those schools generally don't provide the same level of services that we do. And quite frankly, a lot of those students who leave our division, they still come back to our division to receive their specialized related services because private schools don't offer that. And so just want to make it really clear that I think universally, K-12 education thinking is that the buildings are meeting our students' educational needs when they're about 85% capacity, right? That's kind of a, we've learned that. We've heard it multiple times. Generally speaking, a building is meeting students' needs when it's 85% full. Schools aren't like a glass of milk. They're not like a gas tank. They're not designed to be at 100% capacity. When they are, they cannot successfully or appropriately meet the educational needs of students. So then moving on to pre-K, I believe 100% that the division should not be requesting taxpayer dollars for pre-K space right now. I think it's premature. There has been no strategic plan to address pre-K. We do need to have that community conversation. I'm glad that that's beginning to happen. We can't drive that, so we need to look to our funding partners to begin to look at that. And as Supervisor Hippel did eloquently say at a recent board meeting, we need to get it right from the beginning, right? Shouldn't be slapping Band-Aids on things. And so I think pre-K space and understanding how we're going to best meet the needs of our most vulnerable students is something we need to do through a broad community dialogue to look at a strategic plan. Pulling pre-K out makes sense to me. I appreciate our staff and our funding partners recognizing that we must maintain our existing buildings with HVAC systems and roofs and parking lots and playground equipments and windows and walk-in freezers. And there's so many things that we have to maintain and we have to stay on top of because if we do not do that, it will cost the division and our funding partners more later. And I appreciate the fact that we do recognize the replacement guidelines that are standardized and we make just based on, on that data and that information. So I support the CIP, and I think the elementary school needs to stay where it is. Ms. Young?
Just wanted to add one comment because, Ms. Cook, you were talking about Head Start. Okay. One of the things that I believe that this discussion about preschool space is so important and how we educate these students is because our Bright Beginnings program is outstanding. And I know some things about Head Start, and Head Start is not even in the same category as our Bright Beginnings program. Our teachers that teach Bright Beginnings are certified. They have, they have a completely different skill set than Head Start teachers. And I don't mean to bash Head Start teachers, but the requirements for an in-school preschool program is different than a Head Start program. And that's another reason, I think, that it's urgent before we start having Head Start programs developed throughout the county that we address this need for preschool space and have that discussion. It concerns me that, though that we have these students that need services and we're not able to meet, we have students on a waiting list that need to be in a, it's not so much academic, but in a very systematic way that students are dealt with and how they are able to gain skills. And that happens in Bright Beginnings. And I support our Bright Beginnings program completely because I, I mean, I've seen it, actually, and I see engagement of the students, the dedication of the teachers. I would like that program to be available to all the students in our district, that those services versus Head Start. So that's just another reason for me to have that discussion about preschool space. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. No, I agree that the conversation is much needed. And I guess one other thing to point out that worries me in this community when there is some reticence to build buildings that our students need, we do get half a school. So let's take James Blair, for example. It took, I don't know, I think eight years for that building to be built. It's been there now three. It's a half a school. And it's now going to be completed in about another 15 years. So I know, I was a newbie on this board when it was about 75% done, and I asked the architects at the time, so is that auditorium really going to work? Like, how is that going to work? You know, is it a cafeteria? Is it a gymnasium? Is it an auditorium? How does that work? It doesn't, quite frankly. My own student went there. And so Related Arts don't use that building for chorus and orchestra and band. They have to do their performances in buildings that have appropriate auditoriums. And now we're looking at another 15 years before we finish that building. So I just caution, caution any of us who might think for a minute that we should not, we should not advocate for what we need now, right now. And I think it's very clear what our needs are.
Unless there are additional thoughts or comments, move on to Board Matters. Mr. Dowell?
I just wanted to, let me run this back so you can hear me. Just wanted to say thank you again to the staff's incredible work. I know that we were looking forward to the engagement and attendance piece for a few weeks. And nobody here wanted to put any undue stress or burden on our educators that are doing the hard, heavy work every single day, Saturdays and Sundays included. So I recognize all that it took to put that piece together for us. And as Ms. Cook mentioned, the transparency in it. Clearly, I mean, the numbers were the numbers, and they weren't pretty in a lot of ways, but it really revealed the work that's ahead of us and ahead of your staff, Dr. Heron. And so I appreciated seeing that, appreciated the answers, the responsive answers, and being able to predict our concerns, our questions, and have answers and a path forward to reducing those, that stark contrast between what happened last year and what's happened this year. And for a lot of reasons that are just out of our control and out of your control, but stepping up to it. So I just want to say thank you for that and thank you for your hard work, too. And looking forward, in fact, looking forward to, you know, that next report as it would be and seeing the improvement that I'm sure is coming. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell and Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd like to echo Mr. Dowell's thanks of staff and, you know, again, for another, you know, meeting chock full of really good information. I am, remain concerned about equity. I was concerned about it before the pandemic hit. I am more concerned about it now. And I think that it needs to drive our requests for operational and facility funding from here on out. And we are compelled to ask for what we need, not what we think we might get. And I think that we have demonstrated that we are willing and able to be fiscally conservative when it is prudent. I think we demonstrated that by the amount of I think we demonstrated that by the amount of money we returned to our funders this last fiscal year. I think we demonstrated it by having a zero, $0 CIP this year, $0 CIP, which is unprecedented and dramatic. And so with regard to looking at the CIP and, and then the operating budget that's going to come next year and the year after and the year after that, it's going to cost more money to give our students what they need to, to catch up. The world did not stop when the schools shut down on March 13th. It didn't. We are continuing to try to soldier forward, but not everybody's soldiering forward at the same rate. And so that's going to take resources, and it's going to cost money and, and cause us all to, to dig deep. And I think Mr. Regenbaugh revealed some issues that I think we need to contend with as a community, and, and I'm hoping that we decide to do that for our kids because we need to invest in them so that we continue to have a bright future here, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
Just wanted, again, with Mr. Dowell, thank our teachers and our staff. I, I know that, that they're going above and beyond what they should have to do, and very concerned about the stress level of our teachers, and want them to know that, I can't say that I'm pulling with you because I'm not teaching anymore, but I, I am certainly pulling, and for our parents. And I, I enjoy the comment about now that actually classrooms now have doubled the number of students because our parents' participation and parents, be kind, because it's a very difficult job, and I think you're finding that out, that it's not as easy as you thought it was. But I guess the other thing I did want to say, because in our turn to learn, we talked about the additional week after Thanksgiving and winter break, returning to remote learning. That will only work if we're cautious ourselves and make sure that we are being careful, that we're following the guidelines, that we're doing social distancing, that we're, we're wearing our masks, and we're trying to keep things on an even hill so that we don't turn a brighter red. And we already are, they don't have the next step. I don't want to be there either. And then I just wanted to mention that tomorrow is our first meeting of the CTE Committee. Looking forward to that. Especially when I hear about New Horizons, I guess I will be asking some questions about that. And then tomorrow, also, this, this board will be participating in a virtual Virginia School Board Association conference, trying to learn more and to stay up to date, and just want you to know that, that we will be busy tomorrow. So, but thank our superintendent and their staff for, for working with us as a school board and making sure that we're informed so that we can be transparent with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, the three of them took all of our, so I'll just do a lot of echoing of what, what they said. First of all, the teachers and staff, I don't think we can say enough how much we appreciate the work that is being done, and today we had a token adjustment of, of salary and know that we appreciate you more than that, but that's all we can do now. And just want to thank, thank them all for, everybody for the, the great work that, that we're doing to try to meet the needs of our students. It was, one of the public comments today was about voluntary summer school, and, and that is, that is, you know, we got, we have to, we have some data now, and so we have to look at how we, how we meet the needs of our students and how we do those remediation steps. And to Mrs. Cook's point earlier, you know, it shows, it shows the struggles that some are having in this, in this time, and, and so I, that's going to be, that's going to be a big task of the school system going forward is to, is to address those, address those changes. As Mrs. Young said about the, the guidelines and, and us going deeper red on the map, you know, we, we, I think we all believe that having kids in school is the best thing for a kid, but we've got to do the right things as a community to get to that point. She said follow the guidelines, particularly with the holidays coming up, but, you know, we don't want to continue to, to be on the trend that we are now in, in having more, more cases and having this go deeper. With that said, this has been a year unlike any other. It has been very unique and has had its major challenges. But with Thanksgiving next week, we still have a lot to be thankful for, and we have a lot to appreciate, and, and one of those things is, is our school system and the good work they do. So wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a very socially-distanced, small gathering Thanksgiving, and we'll, we'll see what we can do next year. So, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
If you think you had it difficult following, whatever, I, like, kudos to everyone, and yes, I hope everyone can know how much we appreciate you, and yes, 1.5% raise in the $500 bonus check. I hope you all realize through that that we, we are trying as much as we can to appreciate you and give, give you what we can, when, when we can give it to you. And then also, just a big heartfelt appreciation for all the students and the families and the teachers, everybody in it together to just make it through this year. We've had some very good news with vaccines in the last couple of weeks. There is a light at the end of the tunnel. We will get through this. Better days are coming, so it's just holding on, being patient, being good citizens with our masks, and we'll get through it all, so that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ditto, 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 ditto. To all of the above, I, I, I think it's important that we not only thank our, our teachers and our staff and administrators, but thanks again to the families, and thank you for all of that parental engagement. Thanks to our students for sticking in there because it's tough and it's hard, and, and we all still need to be very flexible. I appreciate the transparency. I appreciate all the information that was provided to us tonight with regard to academic achievement and engagement, and, and it's, it's, it's scary and it's, it's tough. It's tough to look at that, but I also know that this division will respond to that data and that we are data-driven, and that staff and administrators and leaders will take this and will, and will come up with a plan to address COVID slide, which is going to be ongoing for a long time. Then just wanted to note, I noted it last week, and some colleagues asked me about the delegate, the VSBA delegate meeting was on the 16th. I attended that, and we voted on the Virginia VSBA's legislative platform and some bylaw changes, and everyone got that information from VSBA. But just of, of note, in particular, one piece that was pulled out of the original block of legislative platform items was the behavior interventionist and requiring that to be an SOQ position, and so there was a hearty debate about that, and it did pass 75-25. So that will be a part of the VSB platform that they recommend that behavior interventionist be in SOQ position. So just wanted to share that. So moving on to our upcoming events, as we referred to, VSBA the rest of this week. Ms. Young pointed out 21st Century Career Ready Advisory is meeting on the 18th at 3:30 via Zoom. Policy Committee is meeting on the 19th, 8:00 AM via Zoom. And then upcoming meetings, we have our joint meeting on December 4th via Zoom that we are hosting. Closed session is on December 8th, 6:00 PM. Work session following that at 6:30. And then we have closed session on January 5th, so that's our organizational meeting. The closed session's at 6, followed by organizational meeting at 6:30 on January 5th. Unless there are additional comments or questions, this meeting is adjourned.